Good evening, everybody. I'm calling to order the meeting of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee meeting for April 6, 2023. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice overall.
The election of members?
Tenovio Millville.
Kerry Godet, Blackstone.
Dan Keith, Blackstone.
Erin Bonaco, Millville.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Tara Scobie, Blackstone.
Charles Dunton, Blackstone.
Kylie Sacco, The High School.
And we're going to start with our student representative. You are it tonight.
Yeah. So the sophomore and freshman classes held a spring fling. Like, it was kind of like a homecoming just for them too. And they had 70-plus students arrive. All spring sports have started. And so tennis had their first match on the March 30th. Softball and baseball opened up the fourth track opened up yesterday. Lacrosse opened up March 31st. And middle school track opened up today. The NHS had an empty bowl fundraiser which raised over $1,600 for the food pantry. We had Mr. BMR from our senior class. They raised over $1,300 for the class of 2023. Our winter band went to MICA and got silver. JV Winter Guard placed first. High school Winter Guard placed third. And on Monday, our fourth quarter internships for seniors are starting. So that means if they had passing grades for third quarter, they're able to do work outside the building for the same amount of hours. And 20 juniors visited colleges in Worcester on Tuesday with guidance. They went to Quinnipiac in Worcester State. And we have free gently-used prom dresses open to anyone.
Excellent.
Thank you.
That's a great report.
Yeah, it's a lot that happened in the past weeks.
And you were sharing the countdown earlier.
Yeah, it's...I think it's 40 days for everyone, 23 days for seniors.
Wow, okay.
I think that's around the timeline.
Almost there.
Almost.
Go fast.
Thanks so much for being here.
Of course.
Some of you may be wondering why I am opening the meeting. This is the reorganization meeting and the election of officers. We do the first meeting in April every year. And so we will get started with that process. And I will entertain a...or actually, the floor is open for nominations for the office of Chairperson for the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee.
I'd like to nominate Erin for that position.
Second.
A motion was made by Chuck and seconded by Tara to nominate Erin Bonaco as the Chairperson of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee for the year of 2023-2024. And we need a voice vote on that. Chuck?
Aye.
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 Yes.
Aye.
I'm going to vote for myself.
Yes, can you vote for yourself? Okay, Erin, you are the chair. Congratulations. I will gladly turn this over to you.
Do you want to say anything before I move it over? Let me just get all my stuff.
Do you need the thing?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone, for entrusting me with all of your monthly business. All right, so next, we're looking for a motion for Vice Chairperson for the year 23-24.
I nominate Tara Larkin.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Dan for Tara Larkin and seconded by Kerry. Are there any other nominations? So roll call vote, Ted?
Yes.
Kerry?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Yes.
Tara?
Oh, no.
Chuck?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And that's unanimous, Tara.
Just move it over.
Taking up new real estate. Thank you for that. And next, we're looking for a nomination for District Secretary for the 23-24 school year.
I'd like to nominate Kerry. If you want, that's...is that the plan?
Want to accept that nomination?
Can we not accept a nomination? Yes. I would prefer to not accept that nomination.
Just do all the papers that were just signed?
Yes.
I'll nominate Tenovio.
Oh, boy. I'll accept it.
Nomination accepted. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so motion made by Dan and seconded by Tara Larkin. That's right, there were two Erins, so it was two Tarras. All right, so any other nominations for Secretary? Roll call vote, Ted?
Yes.
Kerry?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Aye.
Thank you. And lastly, a nomination for...well, not lastly, but for District Treasurer.
Nominate Kerry Godet.
Motion made by Tara, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chuck, and do you accept that nomination?
I accept that one.
It just keeps things so much easier on the...all right. Any other nominations for District Treasurer? All those in favor by roll call, Ted?
Yes.
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 Aye.
Yes.
Thank you. And then we do need to appoint our Assistant District Treasurer, which we just do this annually, and that is under the direction of Mr. Ron Pierre. He takes care of our books for us and has done a lot more since Matt left. But we do need a motion to name him for the 23-24 year.
Motion to appoint.
Okay, so motion made by Tara Larkin and seconded by Dan. And that motion is to appoint Mr. Ronald Pierre Louis as Assistant District Treasurer to the Blackstone Millville Regional School District for the 2023-2024 school year. And roll call vote, Ted?
Yes.
Kerry?
Yes.
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 And then lastly, we need a motion to name...to appoint our District Council, which is longstanding, Long and DiPietro, for the 23-24 school year.
So move.
Motion made by Dan and seconded by Kerry. And a roll call vote, Ted?
Yes.
Kerry?
Yes.
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 Tara?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, that takes care of that business. Thank you for bearing with us. Next on the agenda, we have Consent Agenda A, which is warrants and minutes of meeting for last meeting, March 23rd, which is sent to us by Monique and digitally, and there's a copy to sign. All those in favor of Consent Agenda A?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I was looking for a motion, sorry. So I'm looking for a motion to move Consent Agenda A.
So move.
Sorry, my Dan and Kerry are right next to it. So motion made by Dan and seconded by Tara. All those in favor of Consent Agenda A?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. And moving on, we have public forum. I think everyone that's here is here to talk about other business.
We don't have to sign.
And moving on, we have school committee items. So we need to talk about the this year's school calendar, which...do we have anything there? We did have two snow days and...
Yeah, it's not inside your packet. I didn't want to print it again because it was just one...it's just moving out.
We're updating it online.
Yes.
We're amending the 22-23 school year calendar to fit in the two snow days. We had...the first one was a contractual half day. And then the last day is also a contractual half day. So we need to insert two half days. And I believe an agreement has already been made with our units.
Yes, so absolutely. So good evening, everybody. So we are going to make up the early release date tomorrow. And then the full day that we need to make up, we're going to do on June 16th, moving our last day, which is an early release date...I'm sorry, June 15th, and then moving our last day, which is an early release date, a Friday, June 16th. So our last day of school for this school year will be Friday, June 16th.
Which ends nicely on a Friday.
Yes. And moving that early release date to tomorrow, which I'm very appreciative of the community and our staff working with us and the school committee, of course, allowing that allows us not to have to come back a following week for an early release day on a Tuesday, which is kind of strange. So really appreciate everybody's support and cooperation as we put that together. You wouldn't think it would be that hard to move a half day, but it actually is a lot of steps to it.
The weekend gets in the way.
Yeah.
And then that's June 10th.
That's right.
A new holiday. I think we're just going to have to keep that in mind when it starts school in the future. It seems to be that one or two days that puts us over.
Right.
All right, so all those in favor...I'm doing it again. I'm looking for a motion to amend the 22-23...
I'll make a motion to amend the 22-23 school year calendar.
All right, motion made by Dan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chuck, thank you. So now I'm looking for...all those in favor to amend the 22-23 school year, adding the half day tomorrow and making the new last day of school, June 16th, which will also be a half day. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, thank you. And next, we have recertification of our FY24 budget. But before that, we need some explanation.
Yes. If it's all right, can I walk through what's here? Perfect.
Jason has an update for us.
Thank you. So in your packets this evening, you have a couple of documents, and I'll just run through the titles of them, just so that we're all looking at the same material. The first is the FY24 Budget Certification Follow-up. It says...it's dated today's date, April 6th, updated reductions in revenues. So this is kind of a T-chart. Behind that, the next document reads the Blackstone Millville Regional School District FY23-FY24 Comparison, as the chart or table, rather, with the purple and gold bars. The third document is the Preliminary Revenues and Assessments 24 Sheet. That looks like it's got a bunch of pastel colors on it. And then just behind that is the actual recertification motions that the school committee agree with the numbers that are here, make the motions to read through and recertify the budget. We certified, just to our friends and families tuning in at home, we certified our budget at our first meeting in May, and then the school committee had asked the administration to go back and continue to fine-tune and do some additional work. So at our last meeting, a couple of weeks ago, we went through some additional revenues that we were able to increase, and we went through some additional reductions that we were able to make. And we wanted to take one more look. The administration wanted to take one more look before bringing back to the school committee a recertification number. And so what's in front of you this evening is a few documents that we'll walk through that talks about what a couple of those changes are. And so if I could just walk through quickly each one before we get to the motions. The first, just to highlight what's different here, we were able to find some additional money in our SR3 line, and actually, it's not really finding. We made some reductions to transportation in this current fiscal year through our SR dollars that was...that actually freed up some additional resources that we could carry forward to help offset next year's budget. So we were able to look at and find an additional $57,000. That, just so you know, comes from cost savings in summer school transportation or summer programming transportation and in our late bus transportation. We were running three late buses. We had very low participation in that, and essentially, we're able to do door-to-door service, which is wonderful, but the buses were incredibly underutilized. So we condensed the late bus routes to two routes and then actually set the bus routes based on the students that had been riding the bus, so we could try to find some good spots where we were able to still provide that transportation service to families, but it's not going to be door-to-door. And so with that, we're able to move forward some of the SR dollars for next year to help offset our budget. And so that total increase in revenue was at the summer...the total of 407,000, and then the total in reductions was at 565,000. The total impact on the FY24 budget is 972,000. That's a really big number, and that's something that I just want to highlight because, as you know, as you all know, we're always looking forward and have started some really early conversations on FY25. I know that sounds crazy because '24 is not certified and through the town meetings yet, but we have to plan. And we can say confidently, just with our E&amp;D use and our SR dollars no longer being available, that is at the tune of $900,000. So I just want to put that bug in everyone's ear now, just as we're wrapping up '24 and thinking about '25, which I know Denise is already doing and Jill as well with our planning. So...but we did go back, we did make that small change in transportation and roll forward SR3 dollars for next year. The second page, the FY23-24 comparison, this was an attempt to show our communities that we have done everything we can to try and offset the costs or the assessments to each town and to really highlight the fact that the majority of these increases are really coming from the state. So if you look at the top part of the data table, you see Blackstone. Right underneath Blackstone is their state assigned and minimum local contribution. So again, for those tuning in at home, in fiscal year '23, there...and I'll just round the numbers, but the state assigned minimum local contribution of Blackstone was 7.5 million, and the state increased that to 7.9 million. So just to make sure that we are really clear, this has nothing to do at all with the school district. This is what the state is saying, "Blackstone, you have to pay $443,000 more." And frankly, it's a lot more than that because of the charter school reimbursements and the school choice sending tuitions, which we'll talk about in a moment. Our exclusionary costs, which our transportation actually came down at the tune of about $150,000, and our capital came down for Blackstone by about $113,000. The additional dollars did go up, and essentially, that's everything that's not included in transportation, capital, and in minimum local contribution. Those went up by about $373,000 for Blackstone. And I want to be really clear about this because that additional piece is...that's what we, as a district, are asking for based on the costs of operations and operating the district. And I'm not minimizing them by saying, "That's it." But our additional asks from the district side were $373,000. That's because of all of the work that we have been doing through our budget workshops, finding all those additional revenues to offset the actual total of the budget, and the good work of the school committee of going through all of those steps, all of that process to help us get here. For Millville, last year, the state assigned their minimum local contribution to...again, I'm going to round, 2.4 million. This year, they're at about 2.5 million. So that has gone up about $138,000. Exclusionary, again, which is transportation, is down by about $25,000. Their capital's down by about $17,000, and the additional is up by about $150,000. But I want to draw everyone's attention to the bottom number because I actually think that's the most important one on here, and that's the district operating cost. So if you look last year, FY23, our district operating cost was $27,135,166. In the budget that I'm going to ask the school committee to recertify this evening, should you all agree, our number for FY24 is $27,979,934. That's a 3% increase in operating expenses. The rest of the increase, frankly, is coming from the state, and we as...you as a governing body and we as administration and the towns have no control over that. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands, the school district isn't coming forward asking for 6%, 7%, 8%. We're asking for 3%. The Department of Education, the state of Massachusetts, they are requiring that the district and the towns pay more. Behind that is the Preliminary Revenue and Assessment Sheet. These numbers are totally updated to reflect the changes from the prior two documents and are reflected in the certification numbers. And if you look at the kind of that middle column at the bottom, that's in pink, it says breakdowns, you can see just below that, Blackstone's assessment, and you can see just below that, Millville's assessment. I'm bringing that right to our attention because last year, the overall assessment for Blackstone was $10,695,154. This year, we are asking for an assessment of $11,250,893. So that's about an increase of about $600,000, a little bit less than that. Millville, last year, we requested in an assessment, $3,464,302. This year, based on all of our numbers, that number is $3,711,454. So again, you can see an increase there of about, I think it's a little under $300,000. Much of this, again, we don't have any control over. The part that we can control, we have. But I would like to bring your attention to the top of the left-hand column, that's titled Preliminary Revenue and Assessments, and that light kind of pink or purple, what is that, lilac kind of color? Just below that, the school choice sending tuition and the charter school sending tuition. So the way our budget works, you'll notice there are three rows there: school choice sending, charter school sending, and all other. The all other are our district operating costs. It's what it costs to run the district. The charter school sending and the school choice sending is what the state requires us to pay for children that we are not serving, for families that choiced out or decided to go the charter school route. So when you take those three numbers combined, that gives a total budget of $29,734,399. And then you can see the increases outlined below. You'll notice, I want to bring to your attention, the SR3. When we started this process, that number was about $373,000, it's now $430,000. So that's where we were able to put that additional transportation money that we found. And we did increase the excess and deficiency use as the school committee requested as well. So let me pause here. I don't know if there are any questions before moving into the recertification.
You may have said this, but $500,000 of E&amp;D is being used to offset, to get to this number.
Correct.
That's important, I think, for people to know.
Yeah, between the $500,000 of E&amp;D and then $430,000 in SR. So that's almost a million dollars the district is using to offset.
That is not there to use, like you said, forecasting into '25.
In addition to the almost a million dollars that we are...I mean, that we're not able to fund other things, like positions in the middle school.
Right.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, we have reduced six...we've reduced the budget by six positions. And there has been...and I just want to state it again because there has been still conversation of, "Well, the population of the school district is getting a bit smaller. How come the staffing's not keeping pace?" The staffing is keeping pace. So in the past 10 years, we have lost about 400 students. We've also lost about 22 staff. So at 22 staff times 20, 22 kids per room, that's about 400 kids. So for anyone tuning in that's thinking that we're not keeping pace with that, that's not accurate. We are very much keeping pace with that. And this year alone, we are not filling six positions to try to help offset the costs to the communities. What is happening is the state continues to increase what they're requiring both the Town of Blackstone and Millville to pay, and we, as a school district, are getting squeezed on our end to say, "How do we help absorb some of those costs so that we can be fiscally responsible to our communities," as we have been, as the school committee has been year
All right, so with that being said, the way this works is when we certify our budget in early March, we have an open hearing and the public's welcome, and we present our budget, our needs. And we certify a budget that evening to present to our towns. We take feedback from our towns as we deliver it to them through the next few weeks, and we try to come to somewhere we meet that works for our operating budget and works for our towns. Once we certify our budget from our open hearing, we can never certify higher. We can only certify lower. So the process we're going to take tonight is to recertify down to what we feel is, you know, more affordable for our communities and hopefully without taking away from the kids too much. And essentially, you know, just back to this color-coded sheet, the way Jason just explained it, I think is perfect. Looking at, you know, all other, the 27,979, that is essentially the money we're going to have use of to educate the kids of our towns. The total budget of 29,734 is what our towns are paying, but the two school choice...the school choice and the charter school money is not money we have...we have to pay those bills. So that money is not going into the kids that are in these buildings. So...
And the 29,7 is still offset by the state revenues that we get, Chapter 70, regional transportation.
Yeah.
And then the difference is split between the communities.
All right, so any questions on any of the process or the numbers we're looking at in front of us? So we typically just go around the table, one motion at a time, to get this done. This is basically the legal process for us to be able to present it and get it recorded properly. Ted, would you mind starting for us?
Motion: Move to adopt a gross operating budget for the 2023-2024 school year in the amount of $27,979,934.
Second.
Motion made by Ted and seconded by Dan. Any...all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous, thank you.
Move to apply the following reimbursements to reduce said gross operating budget for the 2023-2024 year. Chapter 70, $11,133,169. Regional transportation, $739,891. School choice tuition, $182,522. Charter school reimbursement, $283,044. Above reimbursements total, $12,338,626. The total operating budget for the 2023-2024 is $29,734,399.
Okay, motion made by Kerry, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dan. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous, thank you.
Move to assess the amount of $10,833,427 to the Town of Blackstone to be applied to the operating budget for the 2023-2024 year, which includes $7,969,16 for the minimum contribution, $1,200... contribution, $1,200, I should say, $16 for the minimum contribution, $1,213,084 for the exclusionary costs, and $1,651,327 in supplemental investments.
Okay, motion made by Dan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kerry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous? Thank you.
I move to assess the amount of $3,537,347 to the town of Millville to be applied to the operating budget for the 2023-2024 year, which includes $2,562,580 for the minimum contribution, $412,816 in exclusionary costs, and $561,951 in supplemental investments.
Okay, motion made by Tara, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chuck, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous, thank you. You mind?
I don't mind.
Thank you.
Motion to approve, move to apply the following amounts to the gross operating budget for the year of 2023-2024. Excess and deficiency, $500,000. Medicaid, $170,000. Revenue user fees, $89,000. Revenue gate fees, $15,000. Revenue classroom rental, $80,000. Revenue pre-K tuition, $115,000.
Okay, motion made by Tara, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kerry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Thank you.
I move to adopt a capital and interest budget in the amount of $417,466.66 to be assessed solely to the town of Blackstone, which includes $130,954.54 for the FWH Middle School, $74,697.19 for the JFK Boiler Windows Project, $155,893.43 for the roof projects, and $55,975.50 for BMR High School Asbestos Management.
Okay, motion made by Chuck, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous, thank you.
Move to adopt a capital and interest budget in the amount of $174,108.8 to be assessed solely to the town of Millville, which includes $44,564 for the FWH Middle School, $40,241 for the Millville Boiler Project, $70,260.58 for the roof projects, and $19,042.50 for the BMR High School Asbestos Management.
Okay, motion made by Matt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tara. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous, thank you.
I move to certify the alternate, alternate, alternate presentation of the total budget representing only monies moving into and out of the general fund. This presentation will be used by the Department of Revenue in the calculation of excess and deficiency.
Motion made by Ted, second by Dan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous? Thank you. Now we will record a certified budget to our towns. Hopefully, that is our working budget for July 1st. All right, so moving on, we have some business to take care of.
Yes, I have. I have that here, it just needs to be signed, well, the, we need to, the committee has to vote to add Denise Carrier.
So we need a motion to add Denise Carrier as the administrator to our Rockland Trust.
OPAP account.
OPAP. This is new, because we didn't have OPAP.
I'll make it a motion to approve for discussion.
Does everyone have a copy of this in there?
Nope, we just did one, because it's a signature page.
So motion just to approve Denise Carrier as administrator. So motion made by Dan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ted. All those in favor, say aye.
Could I just ask?
Yes, sorry.
So is that some, a representative of Rockland Trust, or is that a representative of the district?
Denise is a representative for us, so Denise, Tara, and Kerry are on the actual account.
Okay, that's all, I just wanted to declare.
And then we'll have an actuary who will come and do a presentation of the school committee sometime, I think either at the end of April, early May, and give an update.
And will Ted sign this as the new secretary?
Oh yes, he will have to.
So they're listed on the account, but there's a spot for the secretary too, which is officially you.
So we'll have to change that too.
So I should sign this and leave that?
Yes. So we'll pass that around. All right, so all those in favor of appointing Denise Carrier as administrator, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And next, we have an MSBA update. Is that you?
Yes, that's me. So we're kind of like just in a holding pattern, waiting, June 1st is our official start date when the clock starts running for the project. We have a meeting in the subcommittee, just kind of making sure everything seems like we're doing what we can. In the meantime, we did put together the video that went out today to the community showing the high school, as well as, there were some tours, there was, there were two last night. People seemed to come out and get a feel and a see of the actual building, so.
How was the attendance for the tours?
I think, Matt, was it just you and your son for the second one?
Just me for the second one.
Second one?
Yeah.
I think there were five or six for the, oh, actually Scott, Scott did them, so. Five for the first one? Good.
Nothing to see there, that's why no one came. We all know it's a mess.
Lots to see.
Please, please take a look at our video if you missed that tour last night.
Yeah, yeah, it's been shared, I mean, Jason, it was sent to all the students' families and then kind of just share it out on your social media, or if you have other platforms that I think people should be able to see it on.
We have tours again on April 19th, one at 10:00 AM and then one at 1:00 PM, and then we're scheduling the tours to go out and see.
Yes.
Newly constructed high schools.
And get some ideas and, community's welcome to go to those too to get a good feel of what else is out there.
Hopefully, some of the people that attended the high school tour attend those, so they see the.
Yeah. Hopefully more to come soon, once we get rolling with our liaison and deeper into the project.
June 1st will be here before we know it.
Mm-hmm.
All right, and next up, we have revision of the use of facilities request form.
This was a labor of love.
Lot of work.
Scott. In your packet, you see the policy, KFE, or KF-dash-E. That is the facilities use request form, and we added, Scott added this section for the description of the event, reorganized the form a bit, and hoping that this will help give the school committee a little more information when the forms come in front of you to review. This tends to be the place we get stuck. After all the other things we discussed, we kind of get gaudy sometimes.
It's punchy by this hour.
So we're hoping this will help us keep that part better informed on your end.
Looks like we should have done this a long time ago.
Yes.
Started in 96, revised in 2008. Now we'll say revised in 2008. Have we ever updated the costs since 2008?
No, we have not.
1996.
We did not address the fee schedule, no.
It's not a moneymaker.
Have we ever charged the fees since 1996?
Any outside, if it's not a school.
I know.
School or student-related activity, they do pay. And then if it's outside of our business hours, they pay for the.
Oh yeah, yeah.
The custodians, so. All right, so looking for a motion to approve the updated.
So moved.
Facility request form. Motion made by Dan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kerry. We'll see if this moves it along. Any questions or other comments? Okay, all those in favor of the update, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous, thank you. We'll wait to see that one in our next packet.
Yes.
All right, next up, we have middle-of-year superintendent evaluation. Jason presented to us at our last meeting his mid-year review update with evidence. I'll be happy to forward that on to our two new members. Like, it's a very nicely organized email from Jason. And then, since then, we basically have the duty of giving Jason feedback on, on where he stands with his goals as presented to us. So we used a Google form to do that, and I will also share this with everyone, I have not shared it with Jason yet, but it's hot off the press. So really, all, all we did this time was ask for the committee's feedback on, you know, I left a spot for the focus, the focus standards and if there were any comments to be made, instead of going through and asking about each one individually, which I've done in the past. So a few of the comments are working nicely towards all, they are integrated within all of the work done within the district and Jason's goals. Another one is on target. Last one is 1F, student learning. Student learning continues to be an area with certain subgroup, within certain subgroups not meeting the goals set forth. Jason continues to be aware of the need for the further concentration in these areas and continues to work towards the target of this goal. And then I did list each of his other goals separately. So the first one, district improvement goal, creating a system that works for all, with five answers. Everyone noted on target. A few of the comments for that, creating a system that works for all, men's leadership group is really rounding out to be a success. How can we keep this in place for the future? Getting Charger Nation into the headlines seems to be an ongoing struggle, though such great work is done on a daily basis, it's hard to stick it out and feel you have, it's hard to stick out and you feel you have to boast about it to be recognized. Our kids deserve the spotlight. And the addition of athlete of the week is perfect. Getting our student leaders out and into the community is not only a nice touch, it is bridging our littlest to see versions of their older selves. All great work, thank you. Good progress being made. Jason is on target with this goal, he is very much involved in finding ways to show not just our students and our staff, but the community that work, that works for all and belongs to all. District improvement goal, cultivating our team. Out of five responses, all five are on target. The comments for cultivating our team, job fairs, what a great idea, hope to hear success. Progress being made, would be nice to have staff feedback, but I doubt they'd be comfortable sharing anything negative. Jason is on target with this goal as well, they use, the use of the staff as experts to lead PD discussions allows for the district to lean into the expertise of other staff members. I'm looking forward to the year-end staff survey results. District improvement goal, long-range and short-term facilities plan, five out of five have Jason on target. MSBA is a comment. Lots of work on both short and long-term plans. And Jason is on target with this goal, we have been welcomed into the MSBA pipeline, we have a plan in place to let the community see why the application was submitted, and now the work towards a feasibility study. In conjunction with this process, we continue to have conversations over the best configuration that will serve our students. District improvement goal, learning acceleration, five out of five have Jason on target. Comments, test data is not supporting strong improvements, but appears the tools are in place to support the students and teachers. Jason is on target with this goal, especially with the curriculum piece. However, the instruction portion of this goal continues to be an area needing future work. Beginning of year to middle-of-year data continues to show weak areas among some subgroups. And then student learning goal, four on target, one off target. Looks like plans are in place, we will see MCAS scores later. I see the improvement from beginning of year to middle-of-year, however, I, I just can't mark on target as the need of the middle school grade levels is screaming off the pages. All means all, and we are not reaching this goal if this group is trailing behind. We need to find a way to support and help this group. This is much larger conversation than the small part of this evaluation. So that is the feedback, and I will send you a full copy of this. So you have, I saw you voraciously writing your notes, but you will have it in writing. So the next part of this process will be closing up this evaluation at the, in the summer months, so, or we have to wait. All right, so that's the update on middle-of-year superintendent evaluation. Last on, on school committee, and there's nothing in here for it, we have, we started a small conversation at the end of our last meeting about school committee meeting calendar. Right now, we're set through June, and then we usually approve our meetings July through June. So just to continue that conversation, I think we had thrown around a few ideas about maybe reducing the times, the amount of times that we meet. Right now, we only meet once in July, once in August, twice in September, twice in October, once in November, once in December, and then January and February are very busy budget times. So though I don't see any ti, any room for reduction there, I think it's going to be like budget workshops versus formal meetings. I guess, and with two new members, just to see if the committee would want to look at reducing our September meeting to one month, one in the month, and October, leaving November and December as they stand, because we do have warrants that we have to continuously approve. And then the other piece to think about is the day of the week and the time. I think it's just, oh, forever been a Thursday night meeting, and I, if I recall conversation from long ago, it was because our other boards in town meet on Mondays or Tuesdays. So giving people the chance to attend if they want to, which doesn't happen. And I think all of us, you know, people are watching, they're just watching it later. So if we need to make a change to the night because it works better for our committee, it is a possibility. And we were talking about moving it up a little bit earlier, just if we are going to reduce it to once a month, they may run a little longer. So instead of being later, we should probably start a little earlier. So I'm open, this is really just a discussion item, open to any feedback concerns on any of that.
Are you asking for September and October for once a month? Which we could.
Just an idea.
We could always put that in the calendar, if something came up, you could always post a meeting. Definitely not.
Right.
Post it.
Yeah, we don't want to make them three hours long, you know, though. We've had some three-hour-long meetings, even when we have two meetings a month, so.
That was like the last meeting, wasn't it? Have we had a meeting that's been under three hours?
I thought my meetings had been quick, I don't know what you're talking about. So, alright, let's start with time then. What would the earliest be? When I started, they were seven PM, just so we're all in the, were they seven for you?
Seven and then six-thirty, now six, so.
Wait, I don't remember six-thirty, but I would have you have been here, but.
Pretty sure they were six-thirty. I could be confusing with DTO.
So, that, I mean, obviously, people have day jobs and so what would the earliest you could start be?
I feel six o'clock is a good time.
Six is Six PM, okay. So, there's no change then? And does Thursday work for everybody?
Yes.
And thoughts on reducing the amount of meetings?
It sounds like it's really just September and October.
Yeah, I think it would only work, we already have just one in November and December.
To Dan's point, we can always post a meeting.
We can.
We need to.
So, it would be one in July, one in August, September, October, November, December.
And then January, February. One a week.
Is that not the time that we start doing evaluations, though? So, do we, will we do a workshop at that time? Is it November that we start doing superintendent evaluations?
So, we wait for the MCAS results to come in to close out his year.
Okay.
That's October.
Yeah, October.
That it's out of embargo, so.
We do the, we've been doing the first meeting, MCAS, and kind of finish out the evaluation and then goals.
Gotcha.
But Jason usually has them ready, this is the first year we did it, we actually had done it in the summer when we only had
Yeah.
one meeting, so, or you had them ready in August, so. I don't think it would delay any of that. Do you? Does it feel too close together?
I'm sure, and we can make it work. And do it in one meeting and just roll it straight through, you know, do the MCAS evaluation goals in one swoop.
So, at our next meeting, we'll put a calendar out and it's something that can be adjusted once we have it in front of us or approved, just like we adjust the school calendar as needed, so. Any other recommendations for that, or?
I would just say it's those one a month for those, what's, five, six months? And the rest is at your discretion. It's all on you, Madam Chairman.
It's all about the budget. Alright, so, for our next meeting, we'll have a tentative calendar for planning purposes.
The July meeting isn't always on a Thursday, though, right?
Monday.
Yeah.
And tell us why it's like that, Jason? The, it's an accounting thing, right?
Yeah, that's when we close out the fiscal year. We do that first Monday in July. Which tends to fall around, it can be the seventh, the tenth, it depends on, you know, somewhere in that range. It's the third this year.
Well, it will be the week after.
It'll be the weekend, yeah.
It'll be, I was just thinking it's gonna be much later.
That's usually because, I should say that, yeah, you, the first uninterrupted Monday, because it's usually with the July fourth, in the mix, it gets screwed up. We have to close, close the books.
But they need the time from July first until then to get them closed out. So, we can't have it earlier, if I recall.
We wouldn't be ready, yeah, with the reporting, yep.
Alright, so, we'll work on that, thank you. And now, moving on to the report of the superintendent.
Great, thanks. I just have a few items on my report this evening. First, we're gonna have an update from our athletic director, Sam Yoder, is gonna go over our, not only our spring athletics, Sam, if you want to join us up front here. But also, I think you put a summary on for everybody this evening and have a copy for you, do you have a copy there of that?
Nice to see everybody again.
Nice to see you.
So, yeah, I put spring there first, obviously, because we're in the spring season, and then a little recap on winter and fall sports. Stop me whenever you want, if you have questions, but just basic stuff here like numbers, coaches, some highlights and some plans for next year. So, spring sports. Varsity boys and girls track, we certainly had enough to field teams, they did well yesterday. A lot of first-place finishes, so, that was good. Middle school track was over there today, I think they just wrapped up. A lot of little kids running around, we have seventy-five, which is more than we expected. But, it's a good problem to have, like, like we've said. Varsity girls tennis. There's two boys that play with the team. Because we didn't have enough boys for, you know, their own team, but they can certainly practice with the team. They're one and one. Varsity softball, of course, middle school softball. So, we moved away from instead of varsity and JV teams, varsity and middle school teams. It's really not much of a difference. So, that goes for varsity baseball and middle school baseball as well.
Well, the different, the sixth graders can play?
Sixth grader, yeah, so that is a big difference.
So, they wouldn't have been able to play on a JV?
Correct, yeah.
And where is, where do the ninth graders fall?
So, ninth, it, it so ninth graders can't play middle school.
Okay.
Yeah. So, they'll play varsity.
Okay.
And our middle school baseball team just got dropped off, they went up to St. John's Prep School. One-nothing loss, but they're a good crew. So. Yeah, so that's it for spring, I mean, a lot of kids. We put in for another assistant track coach to help out. And we're gonna look to hire that person next week. To help out the middle school. Any questions on spring?
And transportation, Sam, I know we had a transportation meeting to make sure that all the students that wanted to participate could participate.
Yeah.
Most of the meet, particularly for track, because that's where the larger numbers are.
Yep.
But all of the meets are at home. With the exception of one, I think we play in Douglas or something.
Yeah, there's one middle school meet, I think that's why.
Waynesville Christian.
Waynesville Christian, yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Does the school baseball teams, do they supply bats or anything for maybe players that don't have it themselves?
Yeah, so we have, you know, it's not the best equipment, but we have some older bats and I always tell the kids, like, if they need something, come talk to me.
They need something.
What's that?
They do need something, their equipment, the baseball equipment, I've just, I've heard.
Yeah.
That's, you know, needs updating.
They use each other's, kind of, you know, and parents are paying, it's expensive.
Right. Yeah, so we just, I got new uniforms for the middle school teams, so they should be coming in. They should have came in this week, but they haven't come in yet. Yeah, we can always purchase new equipment. If they need it, I know that the catcher's gear is a little old, doesn't fit our catcher, because he's five-six. But, so we're gonna order that too, and wherever they need, we'll supply it.
Bats.
I mean, I feel like bats are kind of important. It's like a bat, like, you'd have to have basketballs to play, so why wouldn't we have that? Why wouldn't we have had that?
I think we've had them, it just sounds like we need new ones.
Well, we have bats, majority of kids, Ted could probably speak to it, the majority of kids bring, have their own bats.
You get one kid that brings a bat and then the rest of the team wants to use that bat.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So, we just need better bats? Or new, good bats?
I mean, that you'd have to put it in the budget, it's a lot.
The difficulty is, is that they're very expensive.
Yes.
Right.
There's a wide range of, there's kids that use thirty-ones, there are kids that use thirty-threes, there are kids that use, you know, and before you know it, you're spending fifteen-hundred dollars on bat, bats that
That they can't take home at night.
And then there's different
Lifespan of a bat.
Like, regulation are different, right?
They have to use BB core in high school, so there has to be minus three.
My son for town, he hasn't, he needed it, he found his brother's bat.
That's the positive part of the high schools, that it has to be a BB core, so that's the good part, because when you start talking middle school, now you, I don't know what the middle school rules are, but you know, you could have kids that are, in their town or travel ball, they could be using minus eights. And, and some kids are using minus threes, and it's, I think it's dangerous personally, but
Yeah.
But I don't know what the rules are, maybe in
No, it's the same.
Maybe they make them use BB core, I don't know.
Yeah.
Can I, can I just offer maybe a suggestion that like, like what Chuck did last year with the fields and the track equipment, that maybe you have to make an assessment in June, if we can review the needs of, like we did with the track and the band equipment last year. And maybe we'll get that addressed.
Do we need softball equipment, too? Like, when you're talking catcher's gear and bats and, to me, that stuff, like we have to keep up on our football helmets regulation, so how are we not keeping up on that stuff? Right, the catcher doesn't have to bring their own stuff, right?
Mine happens to have his own, so he brings it. He was quite the sight this morning at parent shop-off. I got a phone call.
Yeah, if you'd like me to do that, I could look through, you know, all our, all our needs, but then it's like
Basically, for next year.
Basketball shoes are two-hundred bucks, like, are we
That's very different.
Yeah, I guess it has to be aligned, like, the balls are provided, but like, the, again, baseball, football gets helmets, but baseball brings their own helmet, so I guess we do have to find a a balance.
The school doesn't have helmets? Like, I would think we would have
Oh, I don't know, do we have?
Some helmets.
They might have.
Baseball helmets?
Yeah.
Yes.
They must have some, but
But it's like
Kids bring their own.
Field hockey and lacrosse supply their own sticks. So, is that the same as baseball players supplying their bat? I don't know.
Yeah.
Can we find out what other schools have, I guess?
If I make a suggestion, that I would say we budget yearly for three bats, because you're only gonna let, they're only gonna, they don't make them to last anymore. They don't, they're not gonna go year to year. They make them so they last for a year, like they do every other appliance in your house now, they don't make them to last ten years. So, you know, I basically say, if you're gonna do bats, get a thirty-one, get a thirty-two, get a thirty-three. Budget fifteen-hundred dollars, I did see, when I was helping out last week to try to do a little bridge to the, to the coach, the helmets were good, but they're relatively small, so there wasn't a wide range of helmet sizes.
Okay.
But I would say that we need to budget for, for X amount of, you know, ten dozen baseballs and probably three bats and
Yeah.
And that type of thing.
Got it.
And that's just what we're seeing for baseball, so softball might be the same thing, but we just don't see it.
Anything else on spring?
Did softball also get new uniforms this year? Were they on this year?
Softball, no.
Was there enough softball uniforms for all of the players, though? That, right?
So, middle school, I had to buy some new ones. Because last year, apparently, they were using ones that were stapled together and stuff like that.
They're now, they're all set now.
They're on order. So, they played their first game with some old uniforms, but they're gonna have some new ones next week. Alright. So, moving on to winter. We had all three levels of basketball for each gender this year. Winter cheer. And then we had two co-ops, which will renew for next year. Swim co-op with Grafton. That's several schools in that co-op, and then we have a hockey co-op with Bellingham. That is up in the air. Because now even co-opping with Bellingham, Milis, and us, it's barely enough. So, there's talks about Hope Dale, co-opping with them. I mean, we only have two kids. Not that they don't matter, but you know, so we're gonna find them a place to play, just, it's where it's gonna happen.
Can I just add to that, my husband went to the meeting last night at Bellingham. It sounds like they're getting grandfather in our students to finish their high school with Bellingham if they so choose to continue playing, but new students, it sounds like they're gonna move to Medway, so we will need a new co-op for hockey.
Bellingham is going to Medway?
Oh, so they're struggling to, to, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That was last, and obviously, a raise of hands, I don't think anything official.
But is there any way that we could be part of that?
It didn't sound that way, I wasn't there.
There's definitely a home for us in Hope Dale. They've wanted us for the past few years, you know, it's within the league, I work with Stephanie over there, so it just makes more sense.
Okay.
So. There's a home.
Perfect. I know there are a few younger kids that will play hockey coming up.
Well, we have some super old hockey uniforms, if we have enough
Funny, my oldest ended up with one somehow out of a closet.
So, yeah, we didn't have, you know, I posted for indoor track super early, little to no interest, which is surprising, because we have a huge track team now. So, we didn't have a team. But I put that here, for next year, I'd be surprised if we didn't have an indoor track team.
What, can middle school do indoor track, or just, is it just high school?
Yeah, they can, yeah.
They can?
Yeah.
So, maybe we will, yeah.
I would just need to put a waiver in, a middle level waiver. But it seems like there's a lot of runners coming up. Cross-country was big down here and track, obviously, so we should get that back.
Smart kids.
Oh, yeah. Some highlights from the winter, winter cheer, back-to-back DVC champions. So, congrats to them. And then Lucy Watson, one of our standout student athletes, she was all-conference first team in girls' basketball. She's, she's great in the classroom as well, so it's good for her. Any questions about the winter? Okay, and then going back to the fall. Varsity girls, middle school girls soccer, boys soccer, we had a few kids. I was able to get them up to Bartlett to participate in a co-op. Only two took advantage of that, because it's quite a drive. But they were able to play. Next year, my goal is to field a JV soccer team, because I know a bunch of these middle school soccer players are coming up. That being said, we don't want to throw them to the wolves at the varsity level, so we'll probably run them as JVs.
As well as run a middle school boys soccer team, too?
Yeah.
Since there's a lot of
Yeah, there's plenty.
I think there's two travel teams in fifth grade, so we should have a lot of sixth graders next year.
Yeah, so we're trying to back it back up. Varsity field hockey, JV field hockey, they had a good year. Izzy Goddett, all-conference first team as a freshman. Also throw in the shop boat yesterday, nice job. Middle school cross-country, Michaela did a nice job, there was, I believe, a dozen, maybe fifteen runners. So, that was great. Football update, varsity football, I think I told you last time, but Josh Uglow is given up his position. We found a new coach, Sean Hill. He coached at Nitbuck, Nitmuck for a number of years, he's been coaching for thirty-plus years. We had a committee that interviewed him. He's gonna work out great, and he's already been in the building a bunch, so we're looking forward to next year. And we also dropped down a division. So, we're gonna play schools our size now, which is good, so they're gonna have a good year, I'm excited. Fall cheer, and then varsity and JV girls volleyball, they also had a great season. If you looked down at the highlights, our girls soccer team made it to the state tournament, round of thirty-two. They won their play-in game against Tri, Tri Valley Regional Vocational Tech. And then went to the first round out at Mount Greylock, which was about a
It was a long ride.
Three something-hour drive. That's how the new tournaments work. But yeah, good season. Girls volleyball, they made it to the round of sixteen, and they also had to go out there. Alexis Chardier, if you haven't been down to a volleyball game, she is outstanding. Massachusetts Player of the Week, DVC Player of the Year, all-conference first team. She's gonna be a senior next year, definitely gonna get some Division One, Division Two college looks, so. They're gonna have a good year as well. And then Julie Kiderka, another junior, all-conference second team. And field hockey. They also had a pretty good year, they made it to the second round of the Central Mass Tournament, which is what we used to call districts. And we already talked about Izzy Goddett. And then for the fall next year, we're gonna look to add varsity cross-country and, like I said, JV boys soccer. So all in all, I I don't think I gave you the number there, but it's about 440 student athletes throughout the year. Obviously, there's some double dippers. But a lot of kids. It's been good, though. Yeah.
Sam, for next year, is there a way to streamline for the kids who do play three sports where each season they have to present on the first day of tryouts that like their physical? Is there a system where we can like if they play a fall sport, they hand it in? And then the winter coach sees like, all right, you're good until March.
Yeah, we definitely need to fix it.
Yeah.
It was sort of a mess this year, so I'll speak with the nursing team, Karen, and so we can.
Just an idea.
Yeah.
For next year.
No, you're right.
Just make three photocopies, have them ready.
Oh, I keep that like they come home from the physical and I'm like, let's scan that into my phone. It's in everyone's email now.
Well, I'll tell the kids for like two months in school, you need a physical copy on the first day. And then the day before tryouts, they're on the nurse's office. There's ways to make it better, but then we will.
It's just so many of them are like, I handed it in in the fall. I know, but now it's December, you need it again.
I know.
I'll just say that I was actually at the um middle school track today and it was a lot, there's a lot of kids running and they all did a great job.
Yeah.
There are a lot of kids are really into it, so congratulations on that. Should have a lot of fast young kids out there.
Yeah.
Good, it's good.
Does it seem to be that big, like who our opponent today? Did they have that?
We overwhelmed them.
Did we?
Yeah.
It was the atmosphere was electric.
That's awesome.
It was.
Well, I heard this is how it used to be, so.
It was, yeah. Were they wearing the electric green?
Yeah, they were, yeah. It wasn't a lot of green compared to the purple and gold.
All I saw was green. I was like, wow, that's bright.
Who was the opponent?
Uh Sutton.
I drove in and it was nice to see that it was just people everywhere.
Yeah, that was cool.
And there was baseball going on in the back, so.
It's also also great to hear.
Life is nice to see that at the school alive.
Absolutely.
Ambus.
Yeah. The equipment was great. I went to the varsity meet yesterday. It was great seeing like the equipment in use and I mean, the hurdles out there looked awesome and the kids looked fantastic. I so I stayed for the four by, uh, oh no, it was the 400 hurdle, 400 meter hurdle race and it was just fun. It was fun to watch the kids seeing their uniforms and all the new equipment out and uh even the the small things that we're paying attention to, but like the sand and the pits look great. Just, you know, you know, but it's good. It was really good to see.
The Dallas signs.
Taking advantage of all that. It's good stuff.
Good. All right, well, thank you so much for the.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Sam.
Sam, uh, one one thing, what's in the third storage container?
Third storage?
Is there any new track equipment hidden in there?
No, that um. So music, there's music stuff in there? I think a golf cart and.
Maybe while their new shed is being built.
Okay.
It's almost done.
We're fine with the purple one.
It's almost done.
Yeah. I just wanted to see more.
Mystery, it's a mystery box. Who knows?
Are you just, are you missing anything? Is there anything missing?
You know, I didn't go with Scott, went over the inventory height. I didn't really double check it, but I was.
How many containers do we have? Two or three?
We order two, but then we have the old sheds still, yeah.
We have that, so that old equipment at some future meeting, we're gonna have to decide. I know a young track athlete that wants to, um, is interested.
Start a club?
It's um Noah Laren. So I started a track club and you know, I'm gonna get like here, Noah, you, this is your track club now. If you want equipment, you know, present to the school committee that you're interested in it and, you know, you'd have to store it at your house.
Well, we have rooms, but.
So anyways, that's it.
Uh, I just want to give a very brief update on our school safety planning and school safety work. I know if if you've been tuned into the work that we've done as a district, we spent a ton of time on this over the past, I don't know, frankly, four or five years. And while we don't discuss all of the plans publicly, uh, for obvious reasons, uh, their safety plans. Um, and that is an executive session piece that we actually will talk about tonight when we go to executive session where we'll get into the specifics of everything. I just want to make sure that our families tuning at home understand that we do put a a uh significant priority. It is our top priority in our school district. We partner very closely um with our local law enforcement on all of our plans. Uh, as recent as this morning, I was having a check-in with the chief uh in Blackstone. So we discuss regularly with our police chiefs. We discuss our planning regularly with our school resource officers. We have a a really strong partnership with our local law enforcement, um, which I'm very proud of for the school system because frankly, it's it does a lot of things, but it also, uh, the the main piece is it helps the experts inform us on what we should be doing to, you know, harden up the buildings, to train up our staff, our students. These are things that nobody likes doing, but they're things that we just have to do. It is just the way it is. And so um I did share last week, uh, there were some incidents in the area, not in our district, uh, with some swatting calls. They were locally in Massachusetts, but also Rhode Island. And I get it's very unnerving um to have to, you know, kind of deal with that, but we felt it important at that time to notify the uh our families that those calls were coming into our surrounding towns, that we did not receive any. Uh, we have had many conversations with our law enforcement about how to manage those if they do come in uh and how we'll handle those uh phone calls. Um, but also I did take that opportunity to just share a couple of things um that we are doing. Uh, you may have noticed in our windows. Uh, we have our room numbers um posted. Uh, you can see them from the outside, but you also can see them from the inside. And I know we've spoken publicly before that we in installed a 911 um caller ID system on all of our classroom phones. So if a classroom does call 911, it'll show the operator on the receiving end, the school and the classroom number. However, we also know that in an emergency situation, you may not be calling from the classroom phone. You may be calling from your cell phone. Uh, and we don't want to leave anything to chance. A lot of our students know they're in Mrs. Smith's classroom. They don't know that that's C304. Um, so we put that, um, those room numbers up at a recommendation that actually came from uh the FBI through FEMA to make sure that if we do have students who need to call in in emergency, they can actually say the room they're in. We then put them um the double-facing uh number on the outside so that if you are coming up in an emergency situation, the room is, you know, that is calling is, you know, C304, you can see that on the outside. You know exactly where that is. Um, so I would, you know, just say that that is one of many additional steps um we are taking. As uh the the police chief and I were talking this morning, uh, we are almost at, you know, kind of school safety 4.0 uh because each year we continue to refine, get better, retrain, uh, train better, rework our reunification sites, we work our evacuation plans, find additional ways to harden our buildings, um, which again, we'll talk a little bit about later in executive session. But I do want our families at home to know that this is my top priority and and I know that our returning school committee knows that that myself and our leadership team, along with our school resource officers, spend a huge amount of our time on school safety. If we're not safe, we're not doing anything. Um, and so I just wanted to make sure that, um, you know, to to kind of reshare that with our community tonight. Uh, we will be doing um response drills in all of our schools the first week in May. It will be a version of what we did last year at the high school, uh, although we will not go to the reunification site. Uh, and uh with these drills, we'll just essentially do reunification outside in our parking lots and our in our fields. And so as we near closer to that, um, at our next school committee meeting, I'll kind of run through the logistics of what that's going to look and sound and feel like. And we'll communicate with our families uh well in advance. But um very much focused on this work. And, you know, it 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 has nothing to do and everything to do with the most recent situation. Uh, what we are doing is not in response to that. Uh, all of these plans have been in motion for months. But they have everything to do with that, uh, meaning that, you know, those continue to happen. And we have to make sure that we are doing everything we can to be prepared. So I look forward to updating the committee and executive session and and the details of that, but uh to our family and friends at home, if you have any questions, don't ever hesitate to reach out to me. Uh, I did have a couple of requests that I send uh parents our safety plans. They demanded them. Um, I can't send those. I can't send those out to our community. Um, and well, that in itself is a safety issue, but I'm always happy to have a phone call and talk through, you know, any of any of the concerns and and share as much as I can. Uh, but I just want the public to know that I can't email out our our security response plans to anybody. And so uh we'll talk more about that later, but I wanted to make sure to mention it um on my uh report tonight. And then the last item for uh my report is um something really exciting. Our District of One Family Day is coming up on May 13th. Mark your calendars, uh, 1:00 to 4 o'clock at the high school. It is a Saturday. We just have the most incredible parent organizations, so I just want to give a huge shout out um to uh Jan Acevedo and uh the elementary uh PTO and Sarah Tasker, the middle school PTO. Tara, I think you're on that uh as well. But they're just amazing uh to partner with. Um, not only have they been instrumental in helping uh on the school side really get organized and uh push the activities that we're gonna have, but they're also planning different carnival activities. Um, we're gonna really just blow out what we did last year and we had over 400 people join us last year, which was awesome. And so I think this year is gonna be even better and bigger. And if the committee recalls, one of the main goals of that whole uh activity was to really get our older kids working with our younger kids. And that was awesome, you know, seeing our, I'm thinking of even like express football, you know, the kids that were out there working with our younger kids who were our students. They were in their BMR jerseys. They were playing catch and doing activities out in the fields. We had our color guard. Um, that was, they really were like training the younger students that had never had an opportunity to kind of play with or work with some of that equipment. Our band performed. We had what the band refers to as a petting zoo, which I think is hilarious, but the kids have an opportunity to interact with the instruments. So this year we're gonna be doing all of those things and more. Uh, we'll have lots of food and um we, I am already hearing that some of the stations that um our administrators want to run are are really different and kind of, you know, are are fun and engaging. One's gonna be a food demonstration. Uh, Dr. Rumco wants to do some cooking um with the kids and do some some activities around that. That same day um is our spring performance, so Freaky Friday. It's literally right after our event ends. Um, and we're gonna be looking to have our um actors come out and do some one-acts and hopefully tease the audience a little bit and get them to stick around and see the performance. Um, it's just gonna be a really great day and we're gonna do it rain or shine. Um, so we're gonna figure out how to do, you know, outside things inside and how we can kind of utilize the building. And it's just a really great community event, so I would encourage everybody to mark their calendars. You don't have to come for the whole time, but if you can stop in for a half hour, um, see our kids in action, we'll have face painting and and lots more. Um, so I'm really excited about it and really do want to thank our our parent um organizations because they are just incredible in how they organize and are able to execute on things. So a big thank you to them. And that concludes my report. If there are no questions.
Thank you so much.
Yes, and I'm gonna just keep kind of rolling through those instead of asking Denise to give the reports on the budget. She didn't, you know, didn't build it and is coming in at the kind of the end of the movie, so um I thought it might be easier for me to just kind of roll through this until the start of our new fiscal year where Denise will present um all of our budget updates. And I love that and that would be a good thing. Um, but in the meantime, um, in your packet, you have a few um updates. Um, the first is our expenditure report. And again, uh, we look are looking at this from two different perspectives. Oh, I think, did I hand them out to you? No? Oh, okay. Oh, thank you.
Two pages?
Yeah, it was emailed, so I just wasn't sure if you hopefully had a chance to see. If not, that's totally fine.
He gave me one. I don't mind. You can give me one back.
I'll take them and.
Uh, they're separate. They're separate. It might be easier just to pass them only because those are the function code reports. I would have handed these out, I'm sorry.
Hand them to all of us.
Those are the function codes and then those are the line items, so. So we did both, so you'd have an opportunity to look at them both ways.
Yeah.
So the line item report, you'll see two pages. Um, and then our function code report are essentially just all of those lines rolled into their function code. And so um the function code reports are the ones that will show um at the end of the year where we will need to make some recommendations on any changes from um one function code series to another. For instance, you know, for instance, the 1,000, 2,000, 3,000 series and we'll want to move those forward. Uh, but our spending is still on track uh for where we are thinking we are gonna land by the end of this fiscal year. And as a reminder, we have asked our uh cost center managers, principals and directors to encumber the year, their spring expenses uh by April 14th, so that when we meet next on the 27th, I believe, as a school committee, we will have, uh, you will have a much better sense of where we are projecting the end of this fiscal year to be, so that we can start making some decisions.
Such as bats.
Such as bats, for sure. Um, and um as an update, we are one step closer to having our unique entity number uh reactivated by the federal government. We can see it. We are just waiting for them to approve um our regional agreement in a tax ID form to prove that we are the regional school district. Uh, once that is um reactivated, we can then use our our unique identity number to get um our application in for our $250,000 tech reimbursement, which is also a federal program. It's interesting, departments don't speak to each other, but they just kind of put us in the middle to work it out. Um, so we can see the unique id- uh identity number. We have it. I can tell you what it is. It's just not active. Um, and once they approve our regional agreement, we should be good to go. So that's been about a six-month process. I did not make it easy.
Well, thank you for being persistent.
Yeah, no, we're almost there, which which will impact the bottom line on our end in a good way.
Yeah. Perfect.
Great. And in your packet, you have our personnel report that is to be received and placed on file. Then our facilities updates.
Good evening. It's a kind of a short report, not much going on. Um, so as you know, at the last meeting, the tennis courts suffered some damage over the winter. I met with the owner of Premier Seal Coating and they are willing to warranty the tennis courts. Of course, gotta wait for the weather again. So as soon as the weather cooperates, he's gonna come out and it's gonna require shutting down the tennis courts for a couple of days, so we'll make sure there's no tennis matches going on. May have to cancel practice or just relocate it. Maybe they can use parking lots or something. So that's good. Uh, that will include recoating the whole surface, new lines, everything. And apparently our tennis court wasn't the only one that suffered damage, so it was a a defect with the product that they used.
So essentially, they're redoing it?
Yep. And patch all the cracks again, um, resurface the whole thing, new lines.
And if I could just thank Scott, Scott was relentless on getting that warranty. So that was something that the vendor did not want to do. And Scott was like a dog in a bone to make sure that we could hold people accountable if that didn't work, so very well done and it has paid off in dividends.
In the very first year.
Yeah, and we never even really got to use. Yeah, and we never even really got to use it.
No.
Because it was the end of last season.
Some nice work on that.
Thank you, Scott.
Very good. And the Millville Building Automation System. I received a phone call this afternoon that all the equipment has arrived. They will start on April vacation. April 17th, they're gonna be there. I'll be there to let them in and stay with them and oversee the project. JFK, I discovered a pipe leaking in the boiler room. It is part of the new boiler system. Industrial burner is supposed to come out and look at it. It's a slow drip, slow but steady. It looks like it's two pipes rubbing together. So they'll be out as soon as they can. And that is it.
Does industrial burner see you calling and they're like, oh, it's Scott again?
I think so because even, yeah, even with them, it's a fight. I mean, you know, they, yeah, I mean, that boiler number one, you know, every time I call, it's, what is going on? Why do I keep having this problem? You come out, you replace parts and it doesn't solve it. I said, I'm, I'm done paying for parts. Why don't you come out, change the part? And if it solves the problem, we'll pay you. And that's what they agreed to. Yeah. Poor Megan. And she knows it too because she picks up and she says, hello, Scott. Sometimes it's a good conversation, sometimes not. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions, students? Welcome new members. Congratulations.
I just want to tell you, I've always admired the job you do. But after watching the video today of the high school, my admiration is tenfold how you've kept that high school functioning and that they can have, just running every day. So I commend you in a big way, my friend. I'm really, my admiration has gone to a whole nother level.
Yeah, I mean, and like I told the group last night, I said, you know, you drive by from the road, the building looks beautiful, immaculate. The grounds are perfect, you know, but step inside, please. And the video is posted for those of you out there, so please go online, go on YouTube and watch it. You'll be mortified. You see the desperate need for a new building. Looks beautiful from outside.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
And then I have one facilities use request and it's mine. So I can answer any question that I can have. If you want to know anything, I will tell you.
Inside and outside all day.
Yes. This is our activity on the, on the 13th.
All right, so the, looking for a motion to approve the facility request for May 13th.
Second.
Wait, who said that?
Dan. Yeah, of course.
Thank you. Motion made by Dan and second by Tara. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I have a question.
I knew one was coming.
No, it's not this one, but someone said, was asking if we got there, if it was on our agenda for tonight. They had a request for a facility. If it's denied, like from your office or from another office, do we even see it?
No, but we don't usually deny them unless there's, unless there's like a date conflict.
That's what I was wondering, if it's a conflict with dates or if it just didn't make its way through. So I will almost know that we didn't see it. And as far as you know, there's been nothing that's been denied, so, okay.
It couldn't, but it may not have even gotten to us if when the school where it was put in, there was a conflict on the, on the date, they may have kicked it back.
Right.
All right, so moving on, we have school committee forum, which is our time for any committee member to bring anything forward that they might want on a future agenda or we can start a new discussion if needs be. As it states on the bottom of our agenda, these items listed on this agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the chair to be discussed at the meeting. Not all items may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. So committee forum is a time for that. And we typically, you know, give shout outs for things that we know are coming up or town events that you want to bring up for anyone watching. It's a great time to share. So first I'll start, I'll welcome our two member, two new members. It's great to have people that wanted to come out and join us. And, you know, we'll set a few things up for you guys so you can become part of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees too. And speaking of that, they send mail frequently to your home once you're in there. Every year they do a day on the hill. This year is Thursday, May 4th. Basically, you just show up at the state house and it's a movement by many towns and cities. You know, their school committees. This year's topic is staring down the fiscal cliff.
So we started talking about that.
Full funding of our Student Opportunities Act, children's services, safety, school nutrition, which has been a big one. So you'll see this just, you know, come in the mail and honestly participate in as much as you can. There's a lot of stuff online now because of the pandemic, a lot of stuff has gone virtual. Something that our new members need to do is charting the course. I don't think they do that virtually and I did not have a chance to look up. They do have them in the spring because they know there's a lot of new members coming in. But I will look that up and get that over to you and the website in general. And then I think we set you up with a membership to that.
Yeah, we can send them on.
Stephanie will probably arrange that. The only other piece I was going to mention tonight is that we are down in a very small countdown for our marching band heading to Disney. They will march on Wednesday of April break, which is April 19th, 2:20 PM down Main Street. If anyone's in the area, feel free to pop in and cheer on your Chargers. And they get a nice four, fast and furious four day vacation out of it. At the parent meeting a few weeks ago, Mr. Schaefer told them, no bathing suits. You don't have time. So they are 7:30 breakfast to park closing. They have to meet in the food court every morning for breakfast. And they will close every park four days in a row. So they will come home tired, but with some great memories, so. I'll probably share a few pictures.
Look forward to seeing them.
They're, they're playing Be Our Guest. So, and I, I believe Mr. Schaefer had a conference call with Disney about it. And I wonder, like, I think they can play Disney music, like in Disney.
Yeah.
And they were, nobody can dress up as a character. So that was their, that was their rule.
Are they wearing like our real uniforms?
They are wearing their chef.
The chef, okay.
Uniform from last fall.
Appropriate.
And it is, it's purple and I mean, and they're given a banner from Disney. So I won't, I don't know what it's gonna look like. I haven't seen one of those yet, but I'm like, town parades, they better use that banner this year. That's my opinion.
Do all their.
Who am I?
Do the instruments get trucked down there?
Part of the expense for planning the trip was getting all of that down there. So the, I, the trailer is go, is leaving. And I want so badly to get a picture of that driving under one of those arches. So I don't know how I'm gonna do it, but that's honestly, that's second on the list to my kids marching down Main Street. Is that truck under that, like, I just think that would make a nice.
We're gonna see you on the news, aren't we?
Hallway of your office. So I'm, I'm working on it, I promise. But so the truck is, the, the kid's luggage is going on the truck. The instruments are going on the truck. They have to turn it in to get it checked, to make sure they're not bringing anything that is against school policy. April 12th. Yeah, so I, and I personally would not be able to pack that early, just so everyone knows. But April 12th, they're turning their luggage in and the truck will also move the day that they're marching, to bring their, they have to go backstage. So we were debating like, are we renting a truck? Are we, you know, we're getting a charter bus? But we actually worked it out where the truck driver is going to pull it up there. That's how I'm gonna get my picture.
There you go.
So I'm work, I'm working on it. And he'll spend the day in the park, the truck driver.
I can tell you, I actually participated that in the, back in the 90s and I, I went to Disney with the band.
Do you remember how big the band was then?
A lot bigger.
Yeah.
We were well over 100 back then. So it was an experience though.
I think we have 64, I think we have 64 kids participating and marching. So it's very small in comparison. The last time they went was 2012 and they were 112.
You said well over 100, like 110, 120?
I bet you it was in the 160s.
I think it was in the mid 90s where, you know, we had, the band was it. That was it. No, you know.
Members.
We know, no football or anything like that, so.
Not as big as it was in the 80s though.
Well, you can tell how many that is.
Yeah.
I can show you a video. I sent one to Jason.
Macy's, Macy's parade. Went to Macy's, Rose Bowl.
So that's my update. Does anyone else have anything they want to share?
If you, if you just go look in the trophy wall and you'll see us over there. I had to, this is the bad rivalry. I, I'd like to, you know, when is the last time we had a reorganization meeting after the election where we have eight full members with no?
Not last year.
No, I spent a few years and I'd like to congratulate everyone who, who won the election and welcome Matt and Sarah on the board. And although I think last year we, my first meeting after the election, I thought there was a buffet. Wasn't there sandwiches?
Nobody told them that they had to bring the snacks.
Yeah, that's the new thing, Dan. You supplied that last year.
That's all I have.
And tonight was the big 80s, 90s dance at Millville Elementary for the two elementary schools.
I have some pictures, I'm sure.
I'm sure they're all having fun tonight.
I'm glad they, they were able to keep that and.
Yep.
It'll be a quick half day.
You did a good deal with cranky kids.
Yeah, quick but cranky.
Be a nice early start to the weekend. Anyone else for committee forum?
I'll just say I'm happy to, happy to have joined and, you know, Ted and I ran a hard fork campaign. It was, it was rough.
Enough seats in Millville to space you out on that ballot.
Yeah, so I'm just glad that everything worked out at the ballot box and, you know, look forward to working towards moving the district forward in a positive way.
All right, so now we are, we do have an executive session scheduled. So we will roll call vote into executive session and we will not be returning to session this evening. We'll close our meeting in there. So roll call vote into executive session, Ted?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Aaron, yes?
Yes.
Yes.